Good afternoon and welcome to the 2018 President’s Town Meeting. It is now my pleasure to introduce the 18th President of Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, Dr. Shirley Ann Jackson.
Good afternoon and welcome, everyone. Thank you all for coming. And let me offer my greetings to those who are watching us online in Troy and Hartford and around the globe. So let me begin by introducing our leaders. Let me begin with the President’s Cabinet. The gentleman you just met, Dr. Kravata-Jayle, Professor of Aerospace Engineering and our Provost. Dr. Jonathan Doherty, Vice President for Research and Howard P. Iserman, Professor of Chemical and Biological Engineering. Greg Cook, Secretary of the Institute and General Counsel. Mr. Greg Easton, Vice President for Institute Advancement. Mr. Richie Hunter, Vice President for Strategic Communications and External Relations. Mr. John Cole, Class of ’79, Vice President for Information Services and Technology and Chief Information Officer. Dr. Lee McElroy, Associate Vice President and Director of Athletics. Mr. Curtis Powell, Vice President for Human Resources. Mr. Claude Browns, Vice President for Administration. And I think, since Greg is not able to be with us, Ginny Gregg, our CFO. Mr. Lenorman Strong, our interim Vice President for Student Life. And I believe Mr. Jonathan Wexler, who’s off admitting students. So let me also introduce our academic leaders. Professor Thomas Begley, Dean of the Lally School of Management. Professor Kurt Brenneman, Dean of the School of Science. Professor Evan Douglas, Dean of the School of Architecture. Professor Shaker Garda, Dean of the School of Engineering. Professor Mary Simone, Dean of the School of Humanities Arts and Social Sciences. Professor Stanley Dunn, Vice Provost and Dean of Graduate Education. Professor Linda Schadler, Vice Provost and Dean of Undergraduate. And he may be with us virtually, Dr. Eric Kraus, who’s Dean for Academic and Administrative Affairs for Rensselaer at Hartford. And I don’t know if I’ve seen him, but Professor Peter Fox, Director of Information Technology and Web Science. And I also would like to introduce Mr. Travis Apgar, Assistant Vice President and Dean of Students. Mr. Trey Hand, Assistant Vice President for Student Success. I’m going to get her name wrong. Assistant Vice President, Michelle Talenti-Michel, who is our Assistant Vice President. And a host of others. How’s that? And of course, the wind beneath my wings, Professor Morris Washington. Now to together these folks with all of you, make Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute a transformative force in research and pedagogical innovation and of course, in the lives of our wonderful students. So would you join me in thanking all of them for what they do? In late January of this year, I had the great privilege once again of representing Rensselaer at the World Economic Forum Annual Meeting in Davos, Switzerland. I am actually co-chair of the World Economic Forum’s Global Future Council on International Security. And I was asked to lead a session titled “The Geopolitics of 2030.” And with this session, I was given the fascinating challenge of considering the major factors likely to shape the global security landscape a dozen years from now. Now, since all of us here at Rensselaer are focused on changing the world, I would like to begin today in a different way by offering you an overview, some key points from my presentation at Davos, and of the risks, vulnerabilities, and opportunities that we discussed, that in fact, provide a context for all of our best efforts at Rensselaer over the next dozen years. Now first, in 2030, we are likely to be living in a lower-carbon world with a changing energy mix that will shift international alliances and alter the definition of strategic resources. As you know, countries rich in oil and natural gas have used their resources to great geopolitical advantage in the past. And fossil fuels will continue to be used. However, renewable energy does have the advantage of being able to reproduce locally, potentially allowing the EU, for example, to become less dependent on Russia and bringing electricity to rural populations in the developing world that never before had access to. Of course, there will still be critical strategic resources. They will just be different. For example, as the transportation sector electrifies, materials essential to lithium-ion batteries will be key. Now, the production and mining of some of these materials is currently limited to a few geographies. As much as 54% of the identified lithium resources globally are in what is called the Lithium Triangle of Chile, Argentina, and Bolivia. 55% of cobalt is mined in the conflict-ridden Democratic Republic of the Congo. And 66% of the world’s graphite is produced in China. Now unless the world identifies new sources or substitutes for these resources, they represent a security risk, as well as bringing it home an extremely interesting challenge for our Materials Devices and Integrated Systems Center here at Rensselaer and its associated students and faculty. The second factor shaping the geopolitics of 2030 is climate change, which is likely to cause droughts already in Africa and to threaten rain-fed agriculture there. At the same time, as sea level rises and storm surges threaten low-elevation coastal cities around the globe, with South Asia being particularly vulnerable. Coastal regions of the U.S. are not immune either. Now, the world may see, and to some extent already does, large migrations of climate refugees and governments destabilized by natural disasters. And there are nonetheless new geopolitical opportunities as well, opened up ironically by climate change. The shrinking ice cover in the Arctic Circle is allowing new resources and trade routes to be exploited, including ironically, an estimated 30% of undiscovered conventional natural gas reserves and 13% of undiscovered conventional oil reserves. Now, control of these resources and routes is likely to be a source of tensions among the U.S., Russia, and other nations. And what people don’t realize is that if one looks there, the U.S. has the smallest border of the countries that border that region. Now, the third factor shaping the geopolitical landscape is the diverging demographics between the aging developed world and the developing world, which is experiencing a youth boom. In 2030, the divides will already be extreme, with much of Africa having a median population age under 20, while countries in Europe, as well as China, Russia, and Japan, will have median ages more than twice that. Now, there are challenges on both sides. Aging developed economies may struggle to maintain GDP growth with a scarcity of people of working age. Advances in artificial intelligence and robotics, things we work on here very strongly, may be crucial to increasing productivity and to keeping developed economies from stagnating. At the same time, artificial intelligence and machine learning may speed up the disappearance of middle-skilled jobs and increase income inequality. Developing nations such as India, Pakistan, Egypt, Nigeria, and Kenya, in contrast, all will have growing working-age populations between the ages of 15 and 64. And this could be a great economic benefit to them. But a key question is, do they have, which they don’t have today, but will they have the education, opportunities, and infrastructure to take advantage of it? And so a key challenge to rising living standards is this: Working-age populations will grow the most in South Asian and African countries, where average education levels are among the lowest. Now, recent history suggests that states with youthful populations and insufficient opportunities are the most prone to intrastate political violence. Now, the migrations that have been provoked by such instability, in combination with the sense that globalization has not benefited the middle classes in the developed world, have helped to shape recent politics in the United States and in the United Kingdom. Yet migration can offer a long-term benefit to nations with aging and shrinking populations. Because of immigration, in fact, the United States is not projected to grow as old by 2030 as nations such as Russia, Italy, Germany, Spain, and Japan. In fact, the United Nations predicts a median age of 40 in the United States in 2030, 45 or more in the other countries. But a question is, will current policy changes vis-à-vis immigration alter that trajectory? And the fourth factor shaping the geopolitics of 2030 is in fact rooted in the technologies of what has been called the Fourth Industrial Revolution. In other words, technologies that are merging the digital realm with the physical and biological worlds. The diffusion of such technologies and communications connectivity make it more difficult in certain cases for central states to govern. They allow for the growth, in fact, of transnational alliances, such as alliances of multinational corporations, non-governmental organizations, so-called NGOs, and other multilateral organizations at one end of the spectrum, or transnational terrorists or criminal groups at the other end. Now, new technologies allow as well internal groups, including cities and states, to challenge central governments and to create instability without having large militaries, economies, or populations. Now, of course, the shifts due to connectivity can be exacerbated by the fact that many technologies of the Fourth Industrial Revolution can be easily weaponized by non-state actors, including commercial drones, which have delivered bombs in the Middle East, 3D printing, which has produced grenade launchers, CRISPR gene editing, which may facilitate the production of biological weapons, and cyberphysical systems that may offer new angles of attack. Yet, as we all know here at Rensselaer, advanced technologies can heal divides, as well as create them. A key question is, can technologies address the widening demographic gulf between developed and developing nations by enabling intergenerational linkages in ways that create greater productivity and innovation? If so, these technologies would confer economic strength by virtue of building economies that simultaneously take advantage of the forward-looking and risk-taking of the young and the wisdom and experience of older populations. In other words, could the world come to in fact resemble Rensselaer and other great universities more closely, where we work together across generations, where each year the most distinguished of our faculty members welcome incoming freshmen in anticipation of learning from them as well as teaching them? And this kind of linkage would require a new kind of intergenerational compact that has yet to evolve on national levels. Now, most of the freshmen that we will welcome this fall will be 30 years old in 2030. In other words, beginning to fully grasp their own powers. And it will belong to our students to address the risks, vulnerabilities, and opportunities I’ve just described. Now, here at Rensselaer, the New Polytechnic, we work to ready all of our students for these challenges by fostering three essential qualities: intellectual agility, to see across disciplines, and to create entirely new tools and technologies that will change the world; the multicultural sophistication that creates empathy and that allows them to reach across generations, geographies, sectors, and disciplines to address great challenges; and a global view that recognizes the degree to which the most important risks, vulnerabilities, and opportunities are broadly shared by all of humanity. Now, our superb academic programs prepare Rensselaer students to lead, and I congratulate our faculty, students, and administrators and staff for the degree to which these programs are now being lauded by many different sources. For example, our Information Technology and Web Sciences program has been ranked first in the nation by College Choice among undergraduate programs at national colleges and universities. College Choice also ranked Rensselaer eighth among the best colleges in New York State. Our Masters of Business Analytics has been ranked third by TFE Times. Our undergraduate physics program is ranked sixth by College Factor. Our School of Architecture is ranked 13th by Design Intelligence. Our Games and Simulation Arts and Sciences program is ranked sixth by thebestschools.org, seventh by GamingDesign.org, and 12th by The Art Career Project. In addition, the 2018 edition of the Princeton Review’s Annual Guide, Colleges That Pay You Back, ranked Rensselaer 19th in the nation for Best Career Placement. In other words, we offer our students a superb education and a superb entry to their careers, which is growing even more superb with the opportunities for experiential learning afforded by the away semester of the Arch. We also are adding to our academic offerings in emerging fields with a new Bachelor of Science degree program in music that will begin this fall, as well as a new focus on quantitative health economics in our economics department. We’re developing a new Bachelor of Science program in the Lally School in quantitative finance and analytics, and a new degree or minor in artificial intelligence and machine learning. Now, our ability to anticipate which emerging disciplines are likely to prove most important is one reason why demand for Rensselaer education has never been higher. Overall applications for undergraduate admission for the upcoming freshman class for the fall of 2018 now number 20,375. And that is a 5% increase from last year’s record-breaking number. Now, even more telling is the fact that for an enormous number of students, Rensselaer is their very first choice. So they decide to apply for early decision, which is binding if we accept them. And we received the most early decision applications and confirmations in our history. And 30% of the incoming class of freshmen will have been admitted through early decision. And this also will be the strongest academic incoming freshman class we have enrolled in terms of academics, with the average SAT up another nine points over last year. We expect to achieve a very diverse freshman class. A particularly strong group of young women and underrepresented minorities applied this year. And we admitted 14% more women than last year and 11% more underrepresented minorities. The geographic diversity of the class is sure to be strong as well, with 42% of the students offered admission stemming from outside the Northeast, and that’s against an applicant pool where 51% were from outside the Northeast. Now, to allow us to achieve all of our missions in research and teaching and student life, on March the 3rd, the Rensselaer Board of Trustees approved an overall operational budget for fiscal year 2019 of $439.5 million. Tuition for full-time undergraduate and full-time graduate students will be $52,550, an increase of 3%, which is in line with other colleges and universities. On average, room and board rates will increase 2%. However, the financial aid budget, on the other hand, will increase 5.3% from the current level. Included in this figure are resources to assist students who encounter unexpected financial hardships during their time at Rensselaer. The minimum academic year stipend for graduate students will increase to $23,000, so that we are competitive with peer institutions. And we will continue renewing our world-class faculty, filling the remaining tenured and tenure-track faculty positions planned in fiscal year 2018 budget, but including four constellations. In addition, we will hire teaching fellows and lecturers to maintain instructional quality, and we will be adding new staff as we move towards the implementation of the Arch in the summer of 2019. We also will continue to invest in our clustered learning advocacy and support for students or class, designed to provide one of the best student experiences in the United States. Now, our new off-campus commons on 15th Street, the physical instantiation of one of the pillars of class, is proving to be extremely popular, particularly as a location where students can gather to study. We recently launched a new safe ride program there, which arose out of conversations that I had with some of our female students, who told me that after late nights of studying or socializing, they truly needed door-to-door transport to feel safe on the way home. So in addition to the expanded routes and hours of our shuttle bus service, we now have two electric vehicles donated by American Honda Motors to offer rides until 3:00 in the morning, seven days a week. And demand for this service already is quite intense, so we might be looking for a third vehicle. Of course, to achieve all that we would like to, the success of our Billion Dollar Capital campaign is essential. Transformative Campaign for Global Change was launched in October with $400 million already committed, thanks to the generosity of our alumni, alumni, parents, friends, and partners. And since the campaign launched, we’ve raised an additional $25 million, nearly that, towards the billion-dollar mark, with the ultimate goals importantly, of eliminating the gap between student financial need and the scholarships and fellowships we are able to provide to them; endowing many more professorships to attract and importantly retain the best academic talent; and expanding our faculty to 500 in critical areas of research and teaching; and of course, upgrading and expanding our campuses physically and technologically to accommodate our growth, including our intent to build a new Center for Science, multidisciplinary, and to expand the Johnson Engineering Center. And as we move towards the 200th anniversary of our founding in 1824 and towards the geopolitics of 2030, the future of Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute is bright, bright indeed. Now, in the more immediate future, of course, we will be launching into the world our next class as we welcome a group of extremely accomplished men and women here in May for our 212 commencement, to award them honorary degrees, and importantly, to allow our students to have models of what their careers can become and to learn from them. And so I’m very pleased today to announce our honor ransom. First, we will welcome Mr. Herbie Hemcock. The legendary jazz pianist and composer, who over a nearly 60-year career has received an Academy Award for his round midnight film score and 14 Grammy Awards, including Album of the Year for The River, The Joanie Letters, and a Grammy Lifetime Achievement Award. We also will welcome Ms. Mary Jo White, who is a litigation partner and senior chair at the law firm of Debe Boys in Plimpton. She most recently served as Chair of the United States Securities and Exchange Commission, the SEC, from 2013 to 2017, strengthening enforcement and protections for investors in the wake of the financial crisis. Now, as U.S. Attorney, and this is very important, for the Southern District of New York for nine years, Ms. White oversaw major prosecutions for terrorism and white-collar and organized crime, including a successful prosecution of the people responsible for the 1993 World Trade Center bombing. We also will welcome Dr. Eric Lander, President of the Broad Institute at MIT and Harvard, Professor of Biology at MIT and Professor of Systems Biology at the Harvard Medical School. A mathematician, molecular biologist, and geneticist, he was the principal leader of the Human Genome Project. He has done pioneering work in the molecular basis of diseases, human genetic variation, human population history, genome evolution, and many other fields. And we will welcome Ms. Alicia... Ms. Alicia Bowler-Davis of the Rensselaer class of 1998. In June of 2016, she was named Executive Vice President and Manager of General Motors' Global Manufacturing, which makes her not only one of the most powerful women in the automotive industry, but also one of the most powerful people in American manufacturing. She was named Black Engineer of the Year in December. So we have quite a group, and we expect a lively and thought-provoking conversation with these four guests at the President’s Commencement Colquid, which will be held on Friday, May 18th at 3:30 p.m. in the Impact Concert Hall. And our theme will be “Breaking Paradigms and Transending Borders: Transformative Leadership in the 21st Century.” And I hope that all of you who are able to will join us, and your parents for those who are graduating. And now, I’ll be happy to answer questions, but what I thought we would do is, since I know that a number of you received this flyer, we thought we would just walk through these questions and give you answers to them. And so, the first says that the Director of the Union Search has stalled, and that the administration gave a candidate the interview question, then denied doing so. So I’m going to ask our Vice President for Human Resources, Curtis Powell, followed by our Dean of Students, to address this point.
Is it on?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Listen, first of all, we have reconstituted the search for the Director of the Union. We had one candidate remaining, and we had two candidates go through the entire process with constituencies. I was asked to have the candidates to come back to meet with the Executive Committee of the Students, Student Board, yeah. And when that candidate, one candidate withdrew, withdrew from the approach, and he did not want to go through the process. So the remaining candidate came back, and I was informed by Matt that the candidate had to question, I don’t know where, the candidate received the questions from, whether he wrote them down or whatever. So I decided that we would reconstitute the search, and that’s what we’re doing. And we’re going to be kicking that search off within the next two weeks or so.
Okay, Travis, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I think that, you know, I wouldn’t echo too much of what Vice President Powell said. We’re looking forward to meeting on Monday with members of the Senate and the Executive Board. We’ll meet with the PU and the GEM prior to that meeting and then talk through, you know, how the search will go forward. Students will be intimately involved in the process, and their input will be weighed heavily on our ultimate decision, and looking forward to filling that position, bringing somebody to campus that has, you know, all the talents and experience to really help the Union continue to be successful.
Yeah, let me just reiterate about searches, all of our searches here. We’ve been very successful. And to participate in these searches, it’s not a right, it’s pretty... And to participate in these searches, it's not a right, it's a privilege. And given that privilege, we do expect individuals to act accordingly in representing this institution. And we went through a process of working with the student leadership, and I'm going to change that process of how we do business. That's why I'm meeting with the students on Monday. So if you want to know how we're going to change it, be at the meeting at 12 noon on Monday, because we're not going to tolerate what we went through the last time.
But I will say to you that one reason that Mr. Lenorman Strong is not here is that he and Matt Brand and Cameron are all out at a national meeting, where a lot of the recruiting of student affairs professionals occurs, to talk about the Union position, as well as other open positions in the student life arena. So in point of fact, you know, Matt is engaged, and we're moving ahead. A second comment said that RPI claims imminent domain on a public sidewalk. And so I thought I would ask Richie and Hunter and Craig Cook, in whichever order they'd like, to address that issue.
Thanks, President Jackson. So hopefully everyone got a chance to take a look at what was written about the situation. It happened during Big Red Freakout, and there were students that were handing out some materials in the front of the entryway into the fieldhouse. And Public Safety came to them and asked them to move, and they did. And there was no issue with that. We absolutely believe in freedom of expression, and we support it. The students carried on, and with their activities, in another location. In the course of that, the Public Safety Officer used the term imminent domain. It was not an appropriate term, it was not applicable in this situation. For the multiple media outlets that asked me that question, I told them time and time again, as well as students, that imminent domain wasn't relevant. He made a mistake. So to make that national news is just, it's a sad reflection on our community. He made a mistake. So imminent domain was not the correct term, there's, you know, writing columns about it is not necessary. And we do have our General Counsel here, if he wants, if you want him to explain more about what imminent domain actually means, we can go into that conversation, but I don't think that that was the point. But we do have a few other details about this situation related to the actual property, and why we have these policies.
Thank you, Richie. I'm not going to explain imminent domain, you guys can figure that out yourself. But Richie's right, it's not applicable. Look, the bottom line is, and the officer may have made a mistake in his phraseology, but the property on which the students were on handing out materials was Rensselaer-owned campus property. And if anybody wants to verify that, go down to the County Recorder's Office and look up the deeds, and you're a little bit looking, because you've got to go back to 1942, you'll figure that out. But, um, but look, let me just step back a second and say, why do we have, why do we have rules about people setting up booths or handing out materials? Look, there's lots of organizations around that would love to come onto our campus. It's a great captive audience. They'd like to come in, they'd like to, credit card companies would like to come in and maybe sell credit cards, we might have politicians who would like to come in and hand out, and hand out, you know, flyers, or maybe they have students that they're affiliated with who are RPI students, who they'd like to have them do that for them. Or the NRA might want to have some students that they're affiliated with come in and hand out stuff. So we try to have a policy that says, look, we want to not have that for our campus, we want to have a controlled environment. So we say, look, if you want to do solicitation on campus, you need to be a student-recognized org, you need to be a recognized organization, and you need to coordinate that with the facility coordinator for the property, whether it's the athletics department, or the Impact or whatever. And so, that's the, the policy we try to follow. We're not perfect at it, we don't catch every one of them. But we try to do that, and you try to do it consistently, because if you don't do it consistently, then the next group, whether it's the NRA or whoever, wants to come on campus, says, well, you didn't enforce it against them, why are you enforcing it against us? So, so yeah, it's not, it's not always easy, you know, we prefer not to handle this controversy. But you have to make hard decisions, and sometimes you have to just do it to be consistent. And again, we try to be consistent, I'm sure you can cite times when we're not. Now, if the rules aren't clear, and I understand there's been some dispute about what the handbook says, I'm happy to sit down, Dean Atgar and I have to sit down, we'll sit down and we'll clarify the rules. But that's basically the point of that, so.
Okay, thank you. Jackson Administration forwards an insulting email to all alumni. Again, I think Richie and Greg want to address that.
So Kual is aware of Professor Beistrup's email. Is Professor Beistrup here? No? Okay, well, I won't go into the details of how the email came about, but what I will say is this, just as I mentioned before, we are completely supportive of freedom of expression and freedom of speech, and Professor Beistrup, just like each of us, is entitled to his opinion. He shared his opinion, he shared it very widely, he shared it in a very public way. And we support that. However, his opinion is not the official position of the Institute. It doesn't mean that we, we don't, we don't even make a judgment on his opinion, just like of the opinion of anyone else. So that's what I have to say about the Beistrup email, of which much has been written about as well, some true, some not true, but hopefully that clarifies it. And I think that in speaking with Apali, actually with you, and responding to you, we've been very clear about where we stand. And we have a very inclusive environment, and we know that we have a diversity of opinions, not only within our campus community immediately, but also within, with our alumni. We educate people to question, to have positions, to have perspectives, and they're not all going to be the same. So with that, we support everyone to have their own opinion.
Thank you, Richie. And there is a question, you know, I actually made the decision to send the email out. The email was always already going out in a very public, broad domain area, and it was to inform and to educate, and it was not to make an opinion. And so I do want to clarify that. I've talked with several people, and that's what it is, okay?
Jackson Administration claims student-to-faculty ratio improved from 18 to 1 to 13 to 1. I'm going to ask the Provost to speak to that.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. This is on? So, um, the student-faculty ratio back in 1998, 2000 was immediately 18 to 1. If you look at the overall numbers, 100 graduates plus graduate students, that number today stands as 15 to 1. Why we report 13 to 1 is very simple. The U.S. News and World Report, which asks for these rankings, has made it very clear that report the number of undergraduate students to faculty who teach those undergraduates. That is why it is reported as 13 to 1 today. I think, Dr. Jackson, the second question is related to this, so I may as well speak to the issue of the faculty as well. That faculty counts that the numbers have not changed much. Well, one has to look at it this way. First of all, the number is three, instead of 360, we have hired 377 new faculty members since 2000. Now beyond that, faculty hiring is about renewal of faculty, it is about bringing in new ideas, faculty who start new areas of research, new programs. So it is more than just numbers, it is about changing the quality of education that exists on our campus. If you look at the absolute numbers of faculty, if you look at the total counts, it was 409 faculty in 2000, and it's 489 today. So yes, the numbers have grown, the numbers of tenured tenure-track faculty are slightly up, but they are not up because we do have retirements. This is, this is like any other university, we have turnovers, national averages on faculty turnovers are between 6 and 7 percent. We set between 4 and 5 percent, 4.3 percent is averaged over the last few years. We will continue to hire faculty because that's what we have laid out in the Rensselaer plan, and our objective is to build this to 5,000, that is what the capital campaign is all about as well.
And I think if you look very carefully, what I speak about is hiring faculty. I've never said that the number of net new faculty was 360. And so it is, as the Provost has said, about renewing the faculty, but the faculty crosses a spectrum with tenured and tenure-track faculty, lecturers, professors of practice, and teaching fellows. And so we have a robust cohort of faculty. Our intent is to grow the tenured and tenure-track faculty, but that also depends upon the success of the capital campaign, and so I would urge all of you to help us be successful in that campaign, because that is the way to really do that. Then it's, RPI claims $400 million raised thus far in the capital campaign. Greg, do you want to say anything?
I absolutely want to talk about that. An institution is either in two states, in a campaign, or preparing for a campaign. And so, yes, we actually are in a campaign, and we actually have raised over $400 million, and we're moving towards the 400, over $425 million. And so we are in a campaign, and we started counting the campaign at the end of the last campaign, and that's what every institution does, and that's what happens. And if you, that's standard across all institutions.
And if you really want to look at it the right way, there's a difference between accounting, and some people want to look at that to challenge the numbers, and what counts as a campaign commitment. And a campaign is about the commitments that people make to support the institution. It could be in the form of requests, it could be pledges paid out over time, it could be outright cash gifts, et cetera. And, and there is no hiding of that, and there are rules that are case rules, which is the Council for the Advancement and Support of Education, that we follow very carefully. But then, the actual accounting that goes through the financial statements has to do with cash, and when the cash comes in. And so those are two very different ways. And so, but the way that we discuss what we've raised in the campaign is consistent with that of every other university in the United States. I'm a trustee of MIT, and they don't do it any differently than we do. Then there's the statement that the Administration withholds 10% from donations to student organizations. Greg, you want to talk about that?
So every institution does have a surcharge, and every gift receives a surcharge at the institution, and that means different, and this is standard across the board, every institution sets a surcharge fee, and it's not just on this one thing, it's on everything, and it's only once.
And then finally, Dr. Jackson claimed nothing has changed with regard to the Rensselaer Union, and I'll let Travis speak to that.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. So there's a few things. So the Senate lost its ability to approve changes with the student handbook. The Handbook of Student Rights Responsibilities is a university document. We have a responsibility to make sure that not only is it up to date and following all of the external state, federal legislation that would tell us how we have to enact policy, we also want to make sure that it's, it's appropriate for our students, our student community, and the larger Rensselaer community. Students are a part of the process of deciding what will be a part of any changes as we go forward. We've been meeting with folks from the Student Senate, as well as other students on campus. We're not going to have a process, however, that puts in place, you know, bureaucracy that will delay any kind of change that's necessary for us to comply with state or federal policies or laws. We're also going to make sure that the student voices are heard. We may not always agree on what those policies will be, but we will make sure that we are working with students on what is best for our community. The Executive Board lost its power over the activity fee. The activity fee is voted on by the Executive Board. They work with the Finance Division of the institution to identify what an appropriate top limit would be every year. So that's taken into consideration as, you know, compares with things like the increase of tuition, increase in room and board, and all of those other costs that students have to incur to be students here. And so, you know, they still have that ability to set that fee. The Executive Board, as well as the student groups, will every year go through a budgeting process to determine what organizations are assigned, which dollar amounts, you know, that's absolutely still something that the Union is doing, that hasn't changed whatsoever, other than they work pretty closely with our Finance Division to make sure it's an appropriate fee. I'll come back to you, remind me if I don't, I'm sure you got it right. The Archer Center was removed from the Union, placed under student success. So the Archer Center did certainly have its beginnings, and the Union is still is connected with the Union in many ways. As it grew from just a couple of staff who were really focused on leadership development with student organizations, and started to move into classrooms, working with the Engineering Department and others, that staff grew, the dollars came from university and schools. And we're at a place where we really want the Archer Center and their leadership development to be something that every student experiences as they come in, that through orientation and throughout their experience here as a student. So it still very much has a connection with the Union, but it does reside, like some other offices, in other parts of student life. You know, the Union as a whole resides in student life, and is a part of my portfolio. So technically, it is, yes, a part of student success, but still very much a part of the Union in many ways. Hiring administrative personnel is largely controlled by the Administration. If by that you mean that it follows the fairly standard Institute process for hiring people to make sure that it's a fair, equitable process, a legal process, yes. However, we just hired, went through a process of hiring several people in the Union over the past year, and that was mostly driven through the Union itself, the administrative staff there, working with students, and through the Executive Board to make sure that all of those appointments were, you know, going through, the Executive Board vote for approval of recommendation. That process worked very well. We're really happy to have those new staff on in our, in our Union, as well as a part of our division. The Class Council is no longer able to email their class list, they don't have direct access. We've looked at one of the best ways for us to be able to communicate. We have a project that's ongoing to identify the most effective ways that we can share information with the community, especially our students, and here's what you tell us. Email first is not the most effective way, but that's streamlining it so that students aren't bombarded with just hundreds of emails, I know. If you're getting even half as much as I get every day, it's hard to keep up with your inbox. And so, we are working closely with the Class Deans and the folks in the Union. Maria Roberts works closely with each of the Class Councils to plan ahead what needs to be put out to classes in a timely fashion to inform them about what's going on with each class. If there's a need for kind of an urgent sort of email to go out, we can accommodate that. But we're also driving student organizations in general, as well as ourselves and our offices, to use other formats. You know, how do we use social media in a more effective way? How do we use those other sorts of opportunities to inform our community about what's going on, what they need to know? Because we know email is not the most effective way to do that.
I'll address the last two bullets. But you might want to get the gentleman's question there.
Yes, thank you. I have a question. Would you bring it back? Is Eric the first bullet the last question? Student Center, the students' handbook, did they want to sign the book? I don't know that they had approval rate, I know that they've always been, you know, we've always, well, I shouldn't say always. There was definitely a time that we would go and present those changes to the Student Senate. That hasn't changed, we're still working with the Student Senate on what those changes would look like. I think that this recent process of updating the handbook, actually, I felt like it went pretty well. I think that we've worked pretty well together, and we'll continue to do that, working with the Student Life Committee in particular, but the Student Senate as a whole.
And so then the last two points are that students no longer have representatives on certain trustee committees. This was a trustee decision. The trustees are the legal stewards of the university, and the Administration has the legal responsibility and authority relative to how the university runs. And the students are invited to meetings that relate to them as students, primarily the Student Life Committee, but the Finance, the Advancement, the Audit Committee are all statutory committees of the Board, and no, students are not representatives on those committees. But there are any number of administrators who also don't come to all of those meetings. And so- And so, and then it says, "The student body no longer meets with Dr. Jackson with the same frequency as they once did." I think it's very important, whatever your feelings are, and however much you may be worked up about something, that to tell the truth and the whole truth. And one can look at a question of whether I have met in the recent years as frequently with the grand marshal and the PU as I may have in the past. And the answer is no, because the, first of all, I have a schedule that's pretty hectic. But in addition, I'm one who believes we have to have fruitful meetings, and we have to have agendas and things that we want to move ahead. But I meet with Student Senate in a number of forms. Lee McElroy has me meet with the athletes. I have a Klan League for all the heads of the student clubs and so forth. I meet with students informally. That is how I found out about the concerns of some young women about safe travel away from the campus. And I immediately had Claude look at expanding the routes and the times of service of the shelters. And then Greg, had Greg go out, and he got us these two cars donated from American Honda to create the Safe Ride program. And so, I try to do things for the students. And would I like to spend more time meeting with students? Absolutely. But if you want to ask, you know, where my focus is, if I can create an off-campus commons, if I can create a safe ride service, if I can increase the financial aid budget, if we can still keep hiring instructional staff, if we can improve student housing, you know, we've done a multi-year renovation of the quad, and so forth, then those are the things that are my greatest responsibility. And I have people who are the leaders that I always introduce in meetings like this because they have specific responsibilities in specific areas. And so it is simply an untruth to try to propagate that I do not meet with the students. And I don't want to use a stronger word, but it is important that all of us tell the whole truth. But I really care deeply about our students. I care deeply about the full Rensselaer community. The board, and I've said this in more than one forum, asked me to come here to effect transformative change. I've come to do that, and that is what has been happening. There are many things that had to be addressed when I got here. Not all of those decisions are popular, but in the end, you know, one makes the decisions that one has to make. And I committed, and I've stayed here for 19 years, in spite of things that have shown up in the media, both internal to the university and external, some of which has been pretty egregious. But I'm committed to what I do, and I love the people here. And that's my statement. Thank you. Now, let me see if some of the other people here have some question about geopolitics of 2030, or our honor. Because we're not going to keep rehashing these same questions. That's why we went through them in an organized fashion. Please.
Dr. Jackson, what is it concerns about artificial intelligence and robotics and, sorry, what is it concerns that a lot of people have about artificial intelligence, robotics, and related areas, which are wonderful in many ways, but they do have a downside potential that's pretty frightening? Are we doing anything at Rensselaer either here or in our relationships with others across the country and globally to address those kinds of ethical concerns?
The answer is yes, but I'm going to start with our provost, because I've actually put him in charge of our major artificial intelligence, machine learning initiative. And then I would ask our Dean of Science to make comments, and our Dean of Humanities, Arts, and Social Sciences to make any comments they wish.
So the response to your question, are we doing things here on our campus in artificial intelligence and machine learning? Yes. There are pockets of faculty in the School of Engineering, Humanities, Arts, and Social Sciences, and Science that are working on critical issues. You brought up a very interesting twist on the dangerous aspect, the dangers that lurk behind artificial intelligence. And yes, we have some things that are looking at actually the ethics of artificial intelligence. So that's in the School of Humanities, Arts, and Social Sciences. But to bring all of these disparate groups together, with assistance from IPM, we are organizing a major effort on our campus in the area of artificial intelligence and machine learning. We have just launched a series of research projects, which is within our faculty. We have a plan to actually identify areas where we think we need more strength, and we are going to be aggressively recruiting new faculty into those areas to build up strength, because I believe that cyber-enabled systems is really the fourth industrial revolution, and AI and machine learning is going to be a big player in all of this.
Kirk? Excellent. As with any powerful tool, one has to be cognizant of what one does with it. And so, this is an area that we take very seriously because we do believe that, for example, with our Data Dexterity Initiative for all the undergraduates that was just announced, we're basically spanning now into new space, where now, how do we apply that data in ways, for example, that have ethical boundaries, in ways that we generate models? When you generate a machine learning model, did you build in a bias, for example? If you're going to use that to make decisions that change people's lives, that potentially affect them, you have to be very concerned about this. And in fact, when we had the Supreme Court Justice here not that long ago, we were talking about this computational ethics with him, the Cube Justice. Anyway, I'm going to let Mary talk about the ethics component a little more.
I really appreciate your question, and I have to tell you, I think about it every day. And so, in the School of Humanities, Arts, and Social Sciences, we struggle with this on a daily basis. Through our courses called Haas Inquiry, we encourage students to wrestle with these difficult questions from a multidisciplinary perspective, and understanding that context changes over time. So what is the context today may change, you know, four years from now. Just example is the Mark Zuckerberg interview with the New York Times, saying if anybody would have told me when I was at Harvard that I would be engaged in this conversation, I wouldn't have believed it. And so, the idea that's been brought up about resiliency, the idea about being, paying attention to what's going on, the things about being critical thinkers are foremost in the mind of the faculty in Humanities, Arts, and Social Sciences. So I know many of you have taken a Haas Inquiry course. If you didn't have that experience, let me know. And one of the questions we like to ask of people like Dean Burnham is, just because you can, should you?
That's an important question, because as you know, actually, any technology sits on a knife edge. And when I talked about the geopolitics of 2030, I talked about drones, and people think about drones delivering packages. Well, a bomb is a package. One thinks about 3D printing. Well, if one can 3D print grenade launchers, one has weaponized the technology. CRISPR gene editing, one can create the pathogenicity of some biological agent, and so forth. And so it is important, and I thank you for bringing up that question, that we don't lose sight of. And that's why, you know, what Mary and her folks do, and the Haas Inquiry courses are meant to touch all of the students, because we want them and need them to think about just the kind of thing that you raised. So thank you for doing that. Is there another question? Yes, please.
Can you comment on the two open Office of Civil Rights investigations currently against RPI, one being a Title IX complaint, and the other being the Title VI complaint?
Curtis and Craig.
Yeah, we have one complaint that I'm aware of, and that complaint, in fact, we have OCR interviewing a few people today regarding that one open complaint. And it's about basically individual putting information in on the network that was inappropriate. So we took action against the individual that perpetrated, perpetrated that act. However, the respondent or the complaintant was not satisfied with that. So I feel good that the university did what it needed to do in this regard. And so we take these cases very seriously. I think since February of 2015, we've had 125 sexual assault and misconduct cases on this campus. And we resolve those within a 60-day period. We try to do that, providing we can get the responses from the witnesses that we have identified. And in fact, currently, we resolved all of them, except I think we have about 30 open cases, in which we will get those resolved, try to get those resolved before the end of the semester. So I'm not concerned about that open case. I think we were very prudent what we did, and I'm pleased that we took to correct action.
I suspect the other case you've been talking about is actually not a Title IX case, it may be, it's an academic case. Yeah, right. So, but yeah, so, look, I mean, the only thing, point I would make is, and look, we want to eradicate all of these things, but they happen on campuses throughout the country, and we deal with them. We address them. We address them fairly and thoroughly. And sometimes, people aren't satisfied, and they go to the government. And so, that happens, and we deal with it there.
Thank you. Yes, please.
So if I may, I talked with a friend, actually, about the numbers of the faculties. There's actually a question more here towards the provost and Human Resources regarding the faculty number. So I'll just give a bit of a background to this. I was doing some research on the information, and the numbers I found from the U.S. Department of Education that they had available online is that in 2001, RPI had, I believe it was 331 tenure and tenure track faculty. And by 2016, they only had 329. So over those 15 years, there was a net decrease of two.
I think the provost, I don't mean to cut you off, but I think the provost has made the point. And let's be clear. And again, this is about the truth and the whole truth. What you've ever heard me say is hiring a certain number of faculty. People come to the university, people who are here retire, some people pass away, people leave, people go through the tenure process, they may or may not get tenure. So the net result may be that on the tenured and tenure track ranks, the number has remained about constant, with some fluctuations up and down. We're not backing away from that. But what we also have done is we recognize, particularly in certain disciplines, that lecturers and professors of practice bring unique skills to the classroom. And in fact, what we've done over the years is standardize and professionalize their contracts to ensure that they have employment and income protections, as well as the same benefits that everyone else has. And so you heard the provost say that if you look at the total net FTE faculty, we were 409, we're 489. So there really is not any gain to be made talking about a two-person change in the tenured and tenure track ranks. We've always said that having more endowment to actually hire more faculty tenure on the tenure track is critical, and that's the focus that we have. But in the meantime, we ensure that our instructional staff is robust. And so, you know, that's all that really can be said. And so I would just ask you to look at the complete picture and not trying to poke holes at what we've said. And I think if you look at my remarks, I talk about hiring. I've never talked about that the net faculty was 360 or whatever the number may have been. We track the number we hire, because hiring is also refreshing as people leave, as other things happen. And that's what we try to stay focused on. But thank you for the question. Is there another one?
I still have part of my question.
What's the other part?
So, and this is a clarification from A, based on what you said, the Faculty 500 Plan.
Yes.
Is that having 500 faculty by?
No, we've said we want to have 500 tenured and tenure track faculty, but it depends upon the success of the capital campaign. We've said that, and that's all we can say.
Okay, so the point of my question was, I was going to ask, since it is hinging upon the capital campaign, how do you balance the current amount of tenure and tenure track faculty with increasing class sizes every year?
I think I said that we have instructional staff and faculty in various categories. We have tenured and tenure track faculty. We have lecturers who do an excellent job teaching our students. We have professors of practice who have not come through the tenure track, but they've had unique professional experiences and career experiences that they bring to the classroom, and in fact, to our research. And so any university that you look at has a balance of faculty like that. And so, in point of fact, though, Rensselaer on a net faculty basis has a smaller percentage of non-tenure track faculty than most universities around the country.
Do you want to appear?
Please. Anyone else?
Up here, excuse me.
Yes, please.
Considering what we've heard today from students and other people like, even having this pamphlet in our hands.
Right.
There seems to be an element of distrust between the administration and the students. Do you have any opinions on where that may originate from, and if there is possibly some actions that could be taken to alleviate stress that students may have with the administration?
Well, maybe you could tell us, because I think we spend a lot of time with students, talking to students, trying to understand their needs. But we also size the number of actual students who appear to be upset. And I would say that the vast majority of our students just go about their business every day. And when I talk to, and I'm out a lot, because we are out fundraising, talking to parents of current students, I've yet to run across one who tells me that his or her daughter or son is not having a wonderful time at Rensselaer. And that, in the end, is the metric for the experience, but a true metric is what happens for the students when they graduate. And on those measures, in terms of the jobs they get, the salaries they command, the companies they start, the leadership they provide, the service to our country, the outcomes are stellar. And, you know, all of us would like to be able to spend more time talking with students and doing things, and we do a lot. And I think you should really compare what happens at most universities in terms of the time that senior administrators, including presidents, spend with students. And I think we stack up quite well. And so the important thing I would like you to keep in mind is that our goal is to try to improve the student experience and the outcomes and the support we're able to provide. You know, every day, we try to make a difference. We've expanded, we knew there was a problem with counseling needs. And so we've created a triage center and a triage process, and brought in a triage counselor to speed up the help and support and the assessment students can get in that arena. So those are the things that I think are the important things. And I think you have to tell me, because a lot of the, what we hear and that you all read off your sheets are incoming from the outside. And so, maybe you have some visibility or some intelligence you can share with us about that. Please.
This question is for Mr. Easton. Is it true that when forwarding the Baistrof email, you said that it is important to get the truth out there? And if so, coming from the Vice President of Institute Advancement, how does that not appear to be official institute policies and/or standards? And based on that, how does it seem appropriate to send such an email with such a message?
You or Richie want to address that?
I answered the question, and I did send the email. And yes, that may have been, that is actually.
You say, Mike.
That is actually the statement, and knowing the factors that I know, if they were the same today, I would do the same thing. So, and we, that is where it is.
So if you do the same thing to So if you do the same thing today, does that mean that it is official institute?
It is not. We should never argue, ask me that question. No, it is not an official university position. Mr. Easton decided to share it with the alumni group, because there were many other things, I think, that were being shared. And he decided that he wanted to give the alums a heads up. And that was his decision, but it represents no official position. I mean, there are a lot of things that are floating around here, including in this room, that are assertions that, and the reason we've chosen to walk through them is because we don't want a misrepresentation in terms of what the university's position is and what we're doing in each of these arenas. But thank you. I'm not going to go any further. Please come down and talk with folks afterwards, because I'm not going to do this back and forth. It's not fair to the full audience. Anyone else? Yes, please.
So I'm a lecturer in engineering, I'm a 2009. Thank you. I'm a lecturer in engineering, and I'm a 2009 McNair scholar in the RPI. I might have just asked to come speak at my university's McNair commencement, because, you know, I managed to make the program. The McNair program was really instrumental in me getting to RPI and getting through the program. And I guess my general question is, especially given your glowing words about Ronald McNair, why doesn't RPI have a McNair program? Or is there like a story for where we might find you achieve a McNair program someday?
Well, I think the important point is having support mechanisms for our students, including for underrepresented minority students. And so we've created two scholarships, one, the Eddie Noel Scholarship, one that, in fact, I created. And the other is the Garnet Baltimore Scholarship to honor Garnet Baltimore, first African-American graduate. And so for us, you know, those are the pathways that we feel would appeal to alums and allow us to raise the money that we want to raise to support students. And we have a number of other named scholarships, you know, across the board to support students more broadly. And so we've done that relative to people who have been part of the Rensselaer community. And let me just say that Ronald McNair was a friend of mine, actually. And so a very, very good friend of mine. And so I naturally was quite upset when he died in the space shuttle Challenger accident. But I think the way we've structured things to raise the funds for the purposes I've described are the right ways for us at this time, although I think the McNair scholarships are fabulous. So, thank you. Yes, please.
Me.
Stan wants to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Stan, please.
Well, thank you for the question. The president spoke to the support at the undergraduate level, but at the graduate level as part of the graduate tuition and student support policy, which I guess was put in place 2002, 2003. It's very clear in there, it's very explicit that we do support McNair scholars who do come to campus. So when they identify themselves, that, you know, I do make a point of providing them support while they're here. So I think it's fair to say at both the undergraduate and the graduate level, we have a program for McNair scholars.
Well, what it says is maybe we need to give more visibility for that. Thank you for raising that, the gentleman in the red shirt.
Thank you. So one of the aspects of the capital campaign is to expand ECA and build a new science building. My question is, is there any plan to update our existing facilities?
Absolutely. And you heard me talk about expanding the Johnson Engineering Center. And we're looking at creating an addition to that and trying to do that as much as possible. But embedded in the campaign are a lot of different campaign and physical structure improvements, renovations, repurposing and upgrades and expansions. So all of that is there. I just, you know, I'm not prepared to give you the comprehensive list, but I did mention the fact that we've had a multi-year renovation of the quad going on. We're going to be air conditioning other rez halls, including this summer, and as we do those, we make improvements. And so there are a number of projects like that. We have a multi-year undergraduate classroom upgrade program, undergraduate laboratory. And so these things will continue to go on. And a number of them go on irrespective of the campaign, but with the campaign, we expect to be able to accelerate them. So thank you. Yes, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. Can we have a personal D1 and other sports a little?
Now, I got to ask you, you a football player? No, I'm just kidding. Well, you know, the question has come up from time to time, but let me let Lee begin an answer for you.
Yeah, we have a, we have a unique model, and that's a great question. But as you know, our Division One, many women's ice hockey, and our 21 Division Three teams, and we call it multi-classification. And that's where we are, and we're working to provide six hundred student athletes with the best experiences. I think they will tell you, whether they're D1 or D3, field hockey, swimming, whatever the sport, they're having a great experience and they're really, really enjoying what's going on in the department. But at this point, we have no plans to expand that program beyond its current composition.
Right. And we get asked that and approached from time to time. But I would point out that with ECA, our facilities, you know, are really D1 class and probably at the upper end, but we do subscribe to the scholar athlete model. Ice hockey has been our traditional D1 sport, and when I came, it was only men's ice hockey as D1. So actually, I elevated the women's ice hockey to D1, because I felt we needed to have that parity. But at this time, no, we're not contemplating going to another division level in the other sports. But our students compete very well, and they have a great experience. Yes, please.
If you mentioned earlier that there were some benefits to immigration for bolstering the US workforce demographics, are there any administrative efforts to support international students and further integrating into the RPI community and bolstering our professional relationships that work with the international students?
I think the answer is yes. I think under the class model, we're looking at that. I don't know, Stan, if you or Provost want to make any comments in that regard?
So I think international students represent a very important component of our campus community. I can speak for myself, I came to the United States as an international student myself. And I think they bring a great deal of cultural breadth within, it adds to the atmosphere here. Stan, through his office runs through graduate education programs to bring in international students and to provide them with the right atmosphere. I think as part of the class, there is a strong focus on integrating international students, because we have 10 to 12% of our students entering class of international students. We would like them to be international and integrated at the same time.
Forty-six percent of our graduate students are international, about 13% of the undergrads.
I just, I wanted to add to that. Under the student life, under the new portfolio of student transitions, which is my portfolio, we're in the process of hiring a new director for international student services, and our goal is to move from a very transactional model to a more community-based one. So we're definitely looking to make some changes. And we had a lot of students involved in that search, so we're looking forward to growing. So thanks for that question.
Thank you. Stan, did you have anything you wanted to add? No, I think. Okay. Anything else? Well, Wex is not here.
I'm Jackson.
Yes.
One more here.
Regarding the expansion of facilities on campus, what are your plans to improve study spaces on campus? Because I've used the off-campus comment, and it's not a great space for big work communities.
That's true, it's not a large space.
And you also added outlets and media, but most of them don't work at when I'm here.
Claude, do you want to say anything about this?
It's difficult for me to hear that question behind. She said you're like a couple of fools. Thank you.
I will tell you that one of the things that's important when those kind of things occur is that there be a reporting of that to our FIX system, okay? And that's the WorkOrder system that's online, it's very easy to use. I will tell you, within the last couple of weeks, specifically, there's been two issues in the union that have brought to my attention that have never been reported to the WorkOrder system. So please, you know, it's not as though we're not responding, but we're, you know, we're a big community here, and we have a tremendous amount of facility activity. So if you haven't reported it to FIX, it's going to delay the response and repair. So if you've done that and reported it to FIX, send me an email tonight to remind me of that, okay? But I, by nature of your question, I'll make sure we follow through on it anyway, okay? Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
Up here?
I want to see if others want to ask a question. Thank you. Anyone else? Please, Joe.
Any chance for me to talk to them before?
Well, we'll see. Others? Okay, yes, please.
I just had a further question about the emission control of popularizing, globalizing electric vehicles, and who, I should directly ask further questions about that to the panel?
Same man who just answered the question about the union space, Claude.
All right, thank you.
He doesn't want an answer, he just wants to know.
Just sit down and talk to me. We do have some plans to serve electrical vehicles and to expand the fleet, so I'd certainly like to have a one-on-one conversation with your thoughts.
All right, thank you.
All right. Well, thank all of you for coming and your.